You know why Iowa doesn't have a professional football team? Because Minnesota doesn't want one.
Because what?
Because then Minnesota would want one. I'm a Vikings fan, but I don't get too radical about it at all. Sometimes those players aren't as committed to the state as we are.
The football players?
Yeah, so I mean, they get a bigger draft. They're gonna fall for it.
I've never seen this before. That's my, my level of understanding. You know why I like the Packers?
I wasn't ahead of my game.
Thank you, that's right.
You have a player, so that is Connecticut. So they are community all. And that's why I like.
This will move us.
I used to, I know it's hard. I know. I do take care of it.
Now, this is the one that will, will move Jordan.
Yeah.
So.
Good, how are you?
Good, how are you? Thank you.
Thank you.
I didn't get mine on either one.
Oh, apparently.
That's all right.
Why is his name anywhere?
Oh, he has pictures.
Oh, that's a good one. That's Josh. Like I said.
And Chris is out sick today, so I had to.
That's her, um, that other.
Yeah. No, you can do that, or you can do that. Efforts. I'm definitely a person, but no one's ever just got sick. But they really still have it, really.
Right.
You gotta put your name in.
Right.
Or names up.
Right.
Wouldn't even be better.
Yeah.
I mean, if that's the case.
She can't even talk.
Yeah. That, that won't be public for long. And stuff like that, you know, just call back.
Yep. Same thing, but they don't have anything on here.
Yeah.
You know why you'd be dead if we were, um, everything was started. Yep, just keep that pretty. Wanna watch and make sure it gets on the top there and they don't throw it under.
We need our own gate wall. We need our own pew at church. Or one and a half.
I saw you guys were celebrating birthday parties together tonight. A drink?
Last night. Last night at three. The youngest round.
How old?
Eight. He's a secretary. Old, it's great granddaughter. One great grandson. Goes from one generation to another. Taking tonight's good night to switch to day. Stay with the regular.
They didn't have any regulars.
Maybe John got them out?
No, John's been off the sword. I, uh, had the, uh, I had the, uh.
Think about it.
You might have seen.
Ooh, gosh.
I was always thinking it was a state. Regularly, they couldn't start before Labor Day.
No, I, I think they can change that habit because we're in resort land. They no longer allow it today.
Yeah.
Because, uh, you know, like, I don't have kids.
Yep, yep, yep. And resorts were still full until Labor Day.
Now there's fewer resorts and less kids that are interested in that kind of work.
Yep. However, you want to do it.
Well, there's a lot there. Yeah, all my kids worked at resorts. Agents Dave.
Okay.
I did too, coin cabinets.
Doesn't everybody swing down?
Yeah, really, isn't that a norm?
That's right.
Well, that Sandy Poynter, he's always looking for somebody. And he pays pretty good money, too. And if you ever miss a day all summer, you get an extra three dollar an hour bonus.
Yeah.
So.
Uh, we gotta play around with someone else. Probably not, but he's had three.
That's gone up considerably since Twitter.
But it's mostly just a Saturday job. And it kinda has people who are checking out and checking in, you gotta hustle right along.
Still from the. It's a lot of the, it's hard to find. They're high dollars. They compete with. What do they make working at the daycare?
You know, probably seven, because.
Seven dollars an hour?
You can start out new people at a, uh, lower, lower than minimum wage as their, um, beginning work. We never did.
Yeah, that doesn't show up.
Well, it's like a train with Jonathan. A fifteen year old, a fifteen year old, but they're not ready to join the front end and work like somebody else. Like, uh, they're starting, they're letting it take a seat. There's a training, but they always just, usually just to start early. Hopefully, they'll get jobs. Just like any other game. Twenty-eight days.
Can we call in the air conditioning there now?
We should get a lot more chairs out there.
Better, now we're starting to build up.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Yeah.
Yep, caught it.
Are you on the school board to be still on?
Mm-hmm. That was something for a little bit.
Yeah.
We'll come, yeah.
All right. We'll try that through. We'll try that.
We'll go ahead and call the meeting into order, raise the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everybody to the regular board meeting for October. This time is for interactions for yellow cards on agenda items. Most of the cards that I have up here are all the cards I have up here for the open forum that will be at the end of the meeting. So if somebody has a yellow card for an agenda item, if they could bring that forward now, we could hear for, hear about what your concerns would be. All right, moving on then. Um, looking for a motion in a second to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Ryan.
Second.
Second by Roger. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? Motion carries. Um, approve the minutes for the September eighth, twenty twenty-five regular board meeting and the September twenty-second, twenty twenty-five special meeting.
So moved.
Motion by Leslie.
Second.
Second by Kerry. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? Motion carries. Josh, I guess you're up.
Good evening.
Evening.
I gave you, uh, my report when I came. I just wanted to highlight a couple of things, uh, that have been going on this last month. Uh, I was able to attend my first and be a part of my first roar rally. Uh, you'll see a picture on the back of all the recipients. That went really well. Um, so our next one, I think, is scheduled for the, uh, thirty-first of October, so looking forward to that. Um, mornings have been really good since we've implemented and then I sent out a reminder that on Oc- October first, um, only allowed in the building if you had a meeting set up beforehand. So, uh, that's been going very smooth. Makes the mornings a much, much smoother process for everybody, so I'm happy to report that. Um, the other one that I really wanted to highlight, um, I've been trying to make rounds in each of the classrooms, um, so students can get to know me. So I've been, I've been going in for either their morning meeting or a different time of the day that works well for them. So I've done some read-alouds for some of the classes and get-to-know-you games so they can ask me questions and they get to know me better. Uh, so that's been really fun. Um, I've already seen a big change in the hallway, just because the kids know my name and know me a little bit better. They more have to say hi or wave at me. So that's been, that's been fun. Otherwise, overall, everything's been going very smooth and I'm very, very happy for that, so.
Was your, was your meet the principal night well attended or?
The meet the principal night was not well attended.
Uh-oh.
But there was a few that came, so it was nice to just meet a few, like, extra people I haven't met yet, so.
Good. Rick Hoplin, you're gonna need some be cups of the mic picks you up through the live streaming.
Okay. Other questions?
Um, don't forget about muffins with moms and this week donuts with dads.
Yep, we had muffins with moms, I have it on here, but on Wednesday, we have the, the daybreak with dads, uh, Wednesday morning as well. So muffins with moms was very well attended, uh, thanks to the PTO for hosting that and helped put that on. It was, it was a nice event, so.
Perfect, thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Holerson is out, uh, sick. We had a, a, uh, report from him. Do you have anything you wanna?
I'll just highlight a few of those things on there, that, um, the professional learning teams are up and running. And for the high school, they're really concentrating on the element of Robert Marzano's for the art and science, concentrating on the essential standards and best practice of, of remote setting during the, the school year. And, um, just finished up with homecoming. And homecoming was a big success. We have a new student government, um, advisor, uh, Ms. Lewica did a fantastic job working with the student council and getting that all set up, doing things a little bit differently. Students wanted to have those, uh, uh, fire pits, bonfire a- after the game. And we had more students attending that than we have previously in the dances. So that might be something, if they kinda continue, might pick up a little steam is, if they decide to do that going forward, the years. Um. Advisory time is going very well on Tuesdays and Thursdays, um, that they've added in there, kinda working with the students on the student handbook guidance, personal learning plans, grade assignments and grade checks, as well as working on the fast bridge assessment that the principals and, um, director LaFavor will be, um, sharing with you at our upcoming meetings. And then we just have meeting one of our new staff, Meet Mrs. Megan Ostendorf is highlighted in there. And she's our new high school counselor, if you take a look at that and get to know Megan a little bit more.
Fantastic, thank you. Um, moving on to director's reports, uh, I see Joe has a report here. Do you have anything that you wanna address on Joe's report?
No, you guys have all those and if you have any questions, feel free to ask me, but otherwise, um, you have those. The one thing that I'll add that's kinda nice is we have Hall Card back up and running, um, for that, for the senior high. Hopefully soon that'll be available for the junior high as well. That has been something that has been missing for a whole long time. With staffing and everything, we're gonna get that back up and running, so that's been nice.
Um, I know Kyle's got, he's running around the building and doing all kinds of things.
Volleyball game tonight, yep.
Um, any, any guys, any questions on Kyle's report that was submitted? Jolene, you're good?
Uh, there's only two things on my report. I mentioned in there, I have scheduled the audit reports findings for you three or four times now and you keep saying pushback. And the federal government releases what they call a compliance supplement. And it basically tells audit teams how to audit federal funds. So with us getting title funds and then also federal funds through food service, there's two different single audits that potentially happen. And without that, uh, compliance supplement, our auditors can't officially release the audit book without single, single audit supplement. Uh, hopefully, it will be released soon. Typically, it's out by June thirtieth, so. To be determined. Um, the other little piece that I put in here is just a reminder that our property tax, um, truth and taxation meeting is scheduled for December fifteenth here and it is a six o'clock start. Thank you.
Thank you, Jolene. Um, we have the buildings and building and grounds, um, report there. I don't see Jim in the audience, so any questions on the buildings and grounds report?
No, just some of the highlights there would be, um, basically as a school district initiative moving forward and increasing safe and security of the, of the school that, um, with the tragedies that have happened, um, with denunciation and some other areas around the country. We are taking a look at our perimeter and taking a look and seeing what we can do. As you know, we've kind of identified our commons as a spot that we need to address. Um, access points, entry points into the district we need to, um, look at. And then, um, security cameras we need to look at. So those are some of the kind of those big things that we are, um, currently taking a look at. And right now, uh, we've done a lot of things with, um, some signage, um, increasing awareness of the students, them checking in and out, um, when they're leaving the building. And it has gone fantastic so far. Um, students have really have responded well to that. Um, it makes the job of staff a lot better when, um, they're signing in and out and we haven't had any pushback right after that. I'll lead in a little bit into, um, the technology report from Kevin. Kevin first with that because that leads into it, is that, um, students will be getting, um, high school students will be getting IDs and they will have a little barcode on it. So that'll even speed up the process a little bit faster so that they don't need to come in and sign in and out. They just gotta scan their ID and there'll be a log of, um, checking in and out, so that'll be a lot more efficient for, for students.
Joel?
Well, hello, tonight.
Yes.
Hi, everyone. I'll make this, um, a quick community ed update. Um, first of all, our next community ed newsletter will be in homes this week. Probably towards the later part of the week, so look for that in your mailbox. Um, it's got a whole variety of new youth and adult things. Um, we're kind of in a little lull for classes right now, so we have, um, nature club going on right now. And again, that's a partnership class with Happy Gans and Turtle. And that happens in our, I don't know, my, uh, woods, um, our forest out back. And so, um, we currently have eight kiddos, uh, registered for that class, but registration is still open. So if anyone wants to get their kids involved, they can. Um, our school age care program, um, we currently have twelve enrolled kids in that. Um, and we have five staff on board, uh, working that program. Um, some of our, uh, October, um, youth classes that we have coming up, um, a beaded rock photo holder. Um, we're offering a school of fish, which is like a ice fishing in open water, like tips and tricks for kids. They get a fishing rod, they get a tackle box, they get a T-shirt or a hat. Um, they get some really cool stuff, plus the knowledge to become better fishers, fishing people. Um, so that's coming up. Um, we're offering a deep gorge day camp, uh, pumpkin palooza. And then we, at the end of the month, we start our next, uh, session of driver's ed. So all of that for kids. And then on the adult side of things, um, we have a beaded tree pendant class. So like, if you like to work with, um, you know, little beads and wire, um, there'll be some, they're, they're pretty cool looking. Um, and then an ice dye T-shirt class. Ooh, what's that? It's kind of, it's kind of like tie dye, except you use ice. And it's, it gives a cool effect as it, everything melts and crosses the T-shirts, so that's kind of fun. And that's for kids and adults. And then, uh, wave, uh, serving board class. Um, so like, if you like to do charcuterie boards, this would be a really cool board because it's, it's actually colorful. It's got some, um, blue on it and things like that. Um, our adult volley- volleyball program, we're kind of in the middle of, of that. Um, we started, you know, uh, beginning of September. And so that runs through December and it's just twenty-five dollars for the whole season, so, um, pretty, pretty good deal there. And then, um, at the end of the month, a wooden sign class, um, it's kind of hunting themed. Uh, no bragging until you get dragon. So, uh, that's what we have coming up on the community ed side. Any questions for me?
Questions for Jolene?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Charity?
Been pretty quiet in the neighborhood on my side, so nothing really needed to report. You guys have anything, any questions?
Ready for snow and ice?
We will talk tomorrow. Other than that, things have been quiet, which is, in my world, excellent.
I got a frost alert on my phone for, until the tenth, so.
I have that this right at my house, so, and I see a wooly today.
Cindy?
You'll see the two-year ad bill contracts on the consent, or action item, actually. Um, so thank you for looking at those. And we have heard, we have the tentative agreement with local two eighty-four. We have heard that they are bringing that to vote for their membership on October fifteenth. So hopefully that will be an action item to approve that contract at the November meeting. And our health insurance committee has met twice to go over bids for the twenty twenty-six health insurance renewal. So I will have information on what's been decided on that from shortly.
Thank you.
Thank you, Beth.
Rachel?
Okay, updates from what you have in front of you. Um, under ads is, we do have all of the paperwork that we need for our teachers to begin keeping track of student service hours, how cool they've seen, all of that. So that finally came in. For HRS, as of today, we had seventeen applications to go to the HRS summit, which is the most that we have ever had. So thank you very much for approving out of state travel. We did choose our people who are going. We have April Rice, uh, Lexie Humphrey and Eric Betch from the elementary. And we have Molly Stockman, Melanie Linquist and Greg Gentry, who are going from the high school. Mr. Langsop is gonna go in and myself. So that is gonna be the largest team that we have ever taken to the HRS summit. Very excited and we have already started the planning. Uh, I already sent in our registration information and we're getting, we're working on hotel and our, uh. So, thank you very much, we're looking forward to it, looking forward to the planning and the learning that is gonna be done. And I'm not gonna promise that I won't make you dance when we come back, but.
I've said no, you're okay.
So that's the only new stuff.
As long as she doesn't call me out.
What I've already put on there. Any questions for me?
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, any question, anybody have any questions on the ALP director's report? I don't think they had.
Nope, it's just recovery is up and, and going, so if there are students, you know, that might have a class to make up or something, you have, um, before school options, after school options, um, summer school options, so that's up and running and going well.
Okay. Uh, moving on to superintendent report.
Um, shared some of these things already, just that homecoming went well. I mean, it, it was, uh, a fun time. The students were extremely engaged in all the activities. Um, school safety, um, some of the things that we're looking at doing in, um, the commons area is to incorporate some of the security features with our branding so that we have some, um, elements to where our staff and everything can see out. So it'll look kinda like a, an open window, but from the outside, looking in, you know, it will be shielded that way. It's just something that we could do immediately to help add to some of the, the safety things that we have. Um, as well as, um, really requiring parents to, that need to sign in and wear their visitor badges. That has always been something that we've had, but our morning time gets very chaotic. And so now it's a very, um, concentrated effort looking at the morning so that we can say, can you sign in? Because we don't wanna stop anybody from coming into the building, but they need to meet a teacher, if they wanna join their son or daughter at, at breakfast. It's just, we wanna know who's in the building. And so they'll be redirected into the DO so that they sign in and sign out, um, and do that. Which goes along with some other changes. We've had students getting dropped off very early in the morning. Um, sometimes at seven fifteen, we have them dropping off and, um, we really don't have a whole lot of people here at seven fifteen. So if an emergency or crisis comes up, we wanna make sure that we have those students, um, accounted for, known that it's safe and secure for them. And so we've changed those practices and, and with the help of cub care, that is, going on through community ed, that if parents need to have a place, we have a place that somebody will be in charge of them, watch the eye over them for K-six. And if we have students arriving before seven forty-five, they will be brought down to, on that cub care. At seven forty-five, we have a designated person in the commons area that can supervise, so students can come in, they can start having breakfast in the commons, and we have supervising staff there. Because right now, our teaching staff, um, do not, um, by contract, they don't need to be here till eight o'clock. So we're very understaffed at that. And we just feel like that is a direction we need to go in order that if, for some reason, the fire alarms go off, false alarm, real fire, we know who's in the building, who we need to be looking for. We have a, a trained adult that's gonna help guide them, so, um, having those. Um, and then, uh, we're gonna continue, um, our next step was source well, working on the district's continuous improvement plan on October eighth. And as you know, that's gonna be kind of an ongoing process that come Tuesday. We have the leadership team that's been identified that's gonna start diving on in, um, then. Um, kinda excited about this one because we have been working for a digital Q folder presence now for about three years. And everything that we've been doing so far is taking old Q folders that were in the old DO, which there is, I think there was roughly fifty file cabinets filled with records, um, that are now all digital, not all of them yet. We're working on that, they're about halfway done. Um, digitally scanned in there so that if we have somebody that comes in and needs to have their records from, you know, nineteen seventy-five, we can quick look it up and, and we have records from, you know, nineteen seventy-five. Um, but what we haven't been able to do yet is build new students coming in or our current students with the digital Q presence. And so we'll be working on that with, um, the principals, um, and Director LaFavor and, um, our administrative assistants, trying to pull in, what does that, um, electronic report card look like? How do we put that into a digital Q and keep track of all that? So moving forward into the, the modern age. And then already, October thirty-first, which is just a few weeks away, a fourth of the school year is gonna be done already. So, um, it, it just kinda gives you that piece that time flies. So that's why we always have that sense of urgency. And then again, our work session topic for this month is assessment updates, looking at fast bridge and MCAs. And I told the principals and, uh, Director LaFavor that it's not necessarily looking at scores, but we want you to understand the practices that we use, how it benefits us and what do we do with the information. So that'll be October twenty.
Any questions for Jonathan?
And then for our enrollment report, um, our enrollment, we're holding, holding steady. You know, as I tell you each month, we always fluctuate one or two as people move in and move out and, and stuff. But we are, our total population is, uh, seven seventy-six as of. Well, let me adjust that a little bit because if I add in all the other per pupil units and stuff like that, we're at eight sixty-three per pupil unit. Aside Jolene kinda looking, so I'm gonna make sure of that, not just having number per pupil unit numbers, so.
Any other questions for John? Thank you, John. Moving on to, uh, the consent calendar, need a motion in a second.
So moved.
Motion by Roger?
Second.
Second by Nick Nicky. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? Motion carries. Uh, discussion item seven point one, school calendar options.
All right, now.
All right, now, you, you saw those, and then usually, school calendar options, it isn't much of a discussion to have because, um, state law always prevented us from, um, starting before Labor Day. Well, Labor Day is, um, extremely late the past, or the next two years. And so they have given schools permission, if choose to, to start school before Labor Day. And when I brought that to you, you had said, hey, can you prepare a couple of calendars? So we kinda know what does it look like. These are not final copies at all for you. This is just kinda laying out our school year for our number of student contact days, our number of student teacher days, as well as all the, um, legal holidays that we have in there and trying to work in, um, where our quarter breaks could be. So, um, if you take a look at the one for before, um, Labor Day, we can start school as early as September first, which would then give us four days of school before the Labor Day break with that. Pros and cons to that, and you'll hear me talk about that through, throughout this section, is there's pros and cons to everything. We get the kids in for four days, we're able to establish a routine with them, they can have a three-day weekend, and we come back afterwards, we, um, hit the ground running. Bad thing is, family vacations. Family vacations is often Labor Day weekend, is that last time that people are able to head out. So would they be taking Friday off as well, um, state fair, all of those things play into it, um, as well. Then on the other side, if you take a look at the other end, um, we get able to be done with students here at school on Wednesday, May twenty-sixth, you know, way before Memorial Day. If that is, um, a weekend, get together, go out, travel, explore, and, and do some things. I'm not gonna stand before you and say one is better than the other. I just want you to take a look at, and this is what it would look like. We could stretch it out a little bit further if we wanted to add just some, um, three-day weekends in there, breaks where, you know, um, students and, and staff have off Friday, Saturday, Sunday, or Saturday, Sunday, Monday, and build that in there so that maybe we end on a Friday, so we have a full week there. Downside of that one is sometimes when you have those three-day weekends, it's hard for parents to find, um, childcare for that Friday if they're working and, um, they don't have anything available. So just something for you to study, take a look at, um, future meetings. I'd appreciate some feedback from you on which way to go, cause then I'd like to pull together, um, some of our work groups and kinda take a look at developing the calendar.
Any questions on calendars? And we, we have a little bit of time here, but make sure that you dive into that. So we have some feedback to the, to Jonathan on, on what we'd like to see done.
Any, any initial feedback?
I would assume that you're going to poll the staff?
Yeah, um, we'll poll the staff on before or after school because we polled, um, staff and community about, um, having a spring break, um, last time. And so now also we have this new option available, and we can poll staff and, um, our community and say, would it be a hindrance? Doesn't matter one way or the other, hey, I'd like to have Memorial Day off, so that would be great, you know? I'll look at that.
Any questions? Uh, moving on to item seven point two, zero breach security window proposal.
Zero, I'll just jump in here a little bit while they come in and get set up. Zero Breach is a locally owned company that we've been meeting with for at least two years, if not three years, kinda as they've been doing some, um, product development and kinda taking a look how it goes. And again, this kinda goes along with school safety. Um, do you want that one page brought up now?
Um, maybe, a couple minutes.
All right.
Either way. Thank you for having me. My name is Raymond LaFavor. Um, I own a company called Ballistic Vision Safety Glass. Um, grew up in Elk River, moved up here in two thousand twenty, but I've been building bulletproof windows since nineteen ninety-nine. And, um, some windows go into armored cars or banks, it's the same technology. Ours, uh, we go into heavy industrial machinery. So we have, um, we have these big powerful machines that generate a lot of jewels of energy. And if there's a part ejected or a workholding device inside the machine, it's, it's a lot like a gun blast going off. And a lot of times the operators are right in front of the windows watching what they're working on. So we have, uh, we just build laminated safety windows for CNC machines. Since ninety-nine, I would say we have something like, uh, thirty thousand windows in the field, thirty thousand windows in the field. Uh, we have never experienced, uh, one single catastrophic failure, uh, in, in all this time. I happened to, uh, meet Rachel, your curriculum director, uh, about fifteen years ago. We've been successfully married now for nine hundred and twenty-six days. But, uh, after, uh, you, um, I don't have any children, we have a stepdaughter, and, uh, the school shootings have never affected me. Uh, they're, they're the worst thing ever, but it never happened in any of my community. I never knew anyone who was involved in one, uh, or had a, a victim involved at all. And it was something that my brother and I, he's the co-owner of the company, along with Brandon, uh, gentleman here, we're, we're partners. We, it was always something we kind of talked about, should we get involved with some schools to try to make the schools safer? But we were so busy, uh, with the machine tool side of things, and then I moved up here in two thousand twenty. And, um, there were just other things, kind of, um, other things on the table. Then the Uvalde shooting happened, and, uh, I, that one, that one was hard to watch. They're, they're getting harder and harder for me to watch. That one, uh, I, I'm one of those guys who am happily married and I want my wife to come home after work. And, uh, so we started talking about what kind of procedures you guys have in place the Alice for a cold. And, uh, we, we are asking, I think that every adult in the building, custodial staff, cooks, the bus garage, teachers, I think that if something tragic happened, every single adult would throw themselves in harm's way to protect every kid in the school. I just don't think that there are, um, we're asking them to do an impossible task, uh, put their lives on the line. And I don't think that, after talking with Rachel, I just didn't think that there were sufficient tools or, or we could give them more tools to help us survive something. Because now it just sort of boils down to hide and pray. And, uh, we happen to be right in your backyard, so we started working on that. And, um, so we did some testing with some people, yeah, you, and Roger was there and, and John a couple of years ago. And, um, I wanted it to take off, I wanted to get busy right then, but, uh, we still had, um, a lot of testing to do. I, I, I'm, I'm not a good salesman, I, I, I've never been able to sell something I didn't believe in. And, uh, it was premature two years ago, but through the last couple of years, we've patented the, um, we have two patents with this, uh, technology. So he talked about the, um, vestibules and the entryways. We would replace these one-inch windows that, uh, so right now you have a thin layer of glass, an air gap, and another thin layer of glass for insulated paint. We would use that one-inch cavity to pack that whole cavity with, uh, multi-layered windows. So, and every entryway, uh, the one-inch thick windows we make could stop, uh, every, except for some exotic, uh, like a desert eagle handgun, but it can stop all short guns. And our, our hope is to contain the, the shooter in the vestibules or delay them long enough to, um, s- to give the, the staff and the kids, uh, chance to go to, uh, safe rooms. Um, so, uh, can you, um, scroll down from there? That's me. So.
In that shirt.
Yeah, so. So it's a little bit hard to see, but what we did is, now, one important, everybody, everybody, it, it, you can't get a fingernail clipper onto an airplane through TSA. We have the technology, but everybody knows it's cost prohibitive to do that at every school. So we wanted to maximize, uh, budgetary dollars, uh, with safety. So instead of replacing all the doors that you have, we wanted to use these existing doors, they're heavy wooden doors because they have to be rated for fire, right? You can have a very thin window in there, um, because of melting temperature, glass is so high. So you can have a very thin window, but the door itself has to be thick. So we start, start, uh, thought, instead of reinventing the old door, what we've done is we've put polycarbonate skin on the inside and the outside. And what that'll do is, uh, some high velocity, uh, higher caliber rounds could go through the door. They lose a lot of steam, uh, but a perpetrator won't be able to shoot the locks out or the hinges out and kick the door in. The window that we, uh, you had was about three sixteen inches thick, and it's about as thick as, um, a little thicker than this stack of paper. The door itself is one and three-quarter inches thick. So what we did is we replaced, we filled up that whole cavity with glass and polycarbonate. So now instead of a window that's this thick, your windows, uh, are one inch and three-quarter thick. And what, what those windows do, uh, to be level seven test rated, that means that, uh, the testing distance is about fifteen feet. To be level seven, it has to stop five, uh, AR to twenty-three rounds, uh, uh, from fifteen feet. The windows that we test, it could stop twenty, thirty, forty of these rounds. Um, so, um, we want, I, I didn't want it to be such a defensive posture for the, uh, the Alice lockdown, and then everybody hides. And I wanted to kind of turn the tables, instead of being on the defensive, let the staff and the people, uh, go on the offensive. Now you know the door is safe, the window is, can protect you. One thing that's a little hard to see on this is, on the side of the windows, um, what we did is we made, uh, those checkerboard areas, those are angled, uh, fourteen-gauge stainless steel mirrors. So what that does is, when an incident goes down, light in the classroom goes off, and the hall is down. Part of the protocol is that the halls need to be monitored in case a kid was in the bathroom or something like that. The only way to do that now is to open an already locked door. So what these mirrors will do is, uh, it'll allow the door to remain locked and shut, and everybody's secure behind this thick window and this fortified door. But you'll be able to look in, uh, out in, in the classroom, you'll be able to see out these mirrors, and you'll be able to see down both halls, uh, so you can monitor the halls from the safety of the classroom. And now you'll have a communication network of every teacher on every hall, every, uh, faculty member can, Uvalde took eighty-seven minutes because they didn't know where the shooter was. We wanted to be able to locate which halls and corridors were, uh, secure, uh, that there are no kids in the halls, all the classrooms are locked and they don't see the shooter. So instead of taking, uh, minutes to get them there, we want the first responders to be able to go right in the building where they know the safe areas are, to lock those down immediately. And then you're gonna have some teachers saying, okay, we see the shooter right in front of this classroom door or this, um, um, the library door. You guys have cameras, but they, you have only so many angles. Now you'll have, uh, lifetime reporting from the people involved, and then we will isolate, uh, the threat and, uh, try to neutralize them, uh, immediately. So instead of taking, uh, ninety minutes to remedy a situation, we want it to be over in about two or three minutes and, uh, to neutralize that. And, uh, so we would, first step is to fortify the entryways and the, uh, vulnerable exterior windows. But I also wanna have at least, like, one or two of these rooms, if you don't do the whole school, do a couple of rooms, like the library, where you could pack a lot of kids in here safely. Give, uh, each corridor, each wing, um, someplace they can get to within about ten or twenty seconds. Uh, delay the, the shooter in the vestibule, and then, um, kids are safe, um, in one of these rooms, and they'll be able to, uh, visualize, visually identify the rooms because they'll have these checkerboard mirrors or, uh, some sort of, um, Tiger Pride logo or some kind of logo that you guys, we wanted the young kids to be able to recognize it and, uh, everybody to know where these safe locations are. So that's what we've been working on the last couple of years. Um, uh, any, any parents, uh, that's here, any of you guys, your teachers, we're two miles away. Um, I didn't wanna bring all of our things here to show you, but we have these at the shop, all the test windows. We have, uh, videos of all the testing we've done. My goal, literally, uh, we could easily make Pine River back as the safest public school in the nation. Where you have the technology, it's, when you think about, uh, how much is this gonna cost? We are doing this technology at a fraction of a cost. Uh, we have a small company, family-based, and, uh, we have a patented process that takes many of the typical steps out of bulletproof windows so we can reduce the cost. So it's, it's easily doable, and, uh, legitimately, we could make this the safest school in the nation, I believe.
I've gone in, in the ringside, I think I've seen the presentation two or three times now. And, um, both times it was, um, with the, um, Pine River Police Department and Cass County Sheriff's Department. They're, they were the ones that were, um, shooting away at the doors. Um, I, I think every department wanted to be the ones that could, could break it, um, with it, and they couldn't. They, they couldn't do it. So, um, seeing the product firsthand, um, it's a very defensible product. The one question that I have for you is the same question that we asked before is, I've only seen the testing in, um, good Minnesota climate weather. You know, how do these windows respond to twenty below?
Yeah, that's, uh, that's a good question. Um.
That, that's my biggest question.
Yeah.
Do they fog, do they crack, is the integrity different in extreme temperatures?
It's a good question. The windows that we typically, uh, they involve temperatures between maybe sixty and one-tem, you know, these hot machines. I'm not sure, uh, but we, we, we can make them winterproof. With that one-inch, with that one-inch, if we kept an air gap, um, we could winterproof them. I want to see if a solid window will be winterproof. So worst-case scenario, it would be a little thinner, uh, but you could have that, um, insulating air gap in there. Um, but if a solid window holds up to the weather, it's just more safety, you know? But, um, um, we would have to try those out, you know?
Do you need a testing spot?
That's kinda, we, you and I have talked a little bit about that, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Just for the board, one of the things that we have in, in the capital levy piece is, um, out by door seventeen, which is our activities door, we have the windows that are up for replacement. And so it was just like, if you wanted to potentially test something where you replace, you know, one of those.
Absolutely.
Paint windows with, with this, and, you know, um.
Yeah.
Maybe we can visit and, and bring something to the board, a possible agreement, just to see, how does it respond to extreme temperatures?
Yeah, I know you guys work with Jason Rizinski, so we, uh, we just have to maybe work together with them to replace a few of these for you, you know?
You know, if that's something, you know, the board would be interested in seeing, how does it handle extreme, extreme temperatures now?
I guess.
We won't be doing the, the shooting experiment in the extreme temp- temperatures at the school. That's, you know, uh, but I'm just kinda curious to see how it holds up, does it shrink, does it expand?
Yeah, worst-case scenario is you have a, uh, bulletproof foggy window, uh, and then we'll have to work on some things. But it's, uh, if you're replacing an insulated window, uh, it's, it's gonna be monumentally thicker in the meantime, you know? Uh, so, uh, it would be interesting that we could, I've had a couple of ideas for un-insulated window version like that, and, and we could try out a couple of different configurations, but it's definitely doable.
So it's only the exterior windows and doors that we have to worry about the fog, potentially?
Yeah, and, uh, uh, yes, yeah, yeah. But if, we, we did some testing with some laminated windows last winter in one of our outbuildings, and we, the laminated windows actually fogged less than the insulated windows. And so these laminated windows, instead of having an air gap that doesn't transfer heat or cold, we have a layer of this kind of gooey resin, and I think it's acting like the same way. It's, it's not allowing heat to transfer from one layer to the next. But, but no, we have not, uh, full-blown tested, uh, window from minus forty to a hundred. But, but no, we have not, uh, full-blown tested, uh, window from minus forty to a hundred degrees, you know, Fahrenheit, but, uh, it'd be, it's easily doable.
When you have the extreme machines that are sitting in there that are might be at a hundred and ten degrees or sixty degrees, you would think there would be some kind of residual, you know, whether it's humidity or whatever, you don't see that in a foggy into that, you know, like, your outside room temperature might be this, and the inside, where that machine is going to be, is going to be
Forty degrees difference.
Correct.
Sure, yeah. Um, we, that, we have never had a complaint about fogging, uh, in twenty-six years. Uh, so I, um, um, it's a good, it's something I really never thought of until this, but I haven't fielded any complaints about that, but, you know, the, the, the sixty degrees lower than sixty is what I'm concerned, but
But you, if you have the temperature swing of forty degrees, you're not going to, I mean, it's, it's never, I mean, we creep down to it, and we creep up to it.
Mm-hmm.
When you have that insulation value of, hopefully, that whatever the goo, as you should call it, is, is in between the window panes, it's going to reflect some, deflect some of that. I would just assume that, that when you have that machine in there at a hundred and ten degrees, and your outside room is at sixty-eight, you're still going to have a thirty-degree temperature variance.
Right, right, right.
You know, yes, it's extremely cold, and we have some extremely cold days, but it's never there long enough to, it's not Mystery Alaska here.
Right, 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 yeah, yeah.
Has that any difference in the thick glass on the outside of a drive-up on a bank?
No.
Those are outside.
Yeah, that's, that's a good point. Um, the bank windows in your drive-through are multi-layered, just like we make, and, uh, um, that's, I didn't think about that. Armored cars, same thing, you know, it's hot inside, cool outside. So, um, I've never, I, we've had, we've tested them, not in the extremes and not exactly what we're doing, but we've tested them in similar situations, and, uh, fogging has never come up yet, uh, but that doesn't mean that it, it won't, you know? But, uh, not so far.
Foggy, moisture.
Yeah, yeah.
So, by looking at faces, Raymond and I should continue some discussion.
And we have, if we have the windows that we're going to replace anyhow?
The other, the other thing too, is there, there have been six or eight of the local businesses who know what we're doing, and, and, uh, the classroom door, these, the, the door already costs you guys, uh, almost two thousand bucks. I don't know if you know that these fire doors are that expensive. So if you came in to replace a whole door, you're, you're asking taxpayers to scrap a two-thousand-dollar door, and then spend more money on new product, construction costs, labor costs, all these things, and this is just going to bolt right up on there. These door kits are less than, to turn your classrooms into a level seven, um, safe room.
Seven forty-nine.
Uh, it's going to be, that door kit is going to be about fifteen hundred bucks, not ten grand or fifteen grand. And we can, uh, the local businesses, uh, like, think about a park bench, this bench is, uh, donated, loving memory of Dorothy Johnson, whatever. Businesses have asked if, uh, they would, uh, to sponsor classroom doors, just put their, um, gardeners hardware, um, the, the feed store, and, uh, just, you know, this door was donated by, there, I think, I think once you got this word out, you'd have community grad sales. I think this is the number-one issue. Uh, I, when I was a kid, we had, uh, one out of ten pickup, two out of five pickups had shotguns in there, hunting rifles, you know, uh, it just, it wasn't even something we thought of back then. And, um, but, uh, you know, it's, it's, I, I don't think that the school shootings are going to stop. Uh, I, I think it's a mental disorder. I'm a Second Amendment, uh, advocate. I, I, uh, I don't think that you're going to stop with gun control or trying to, uh, legislate against crazy, um, but we can, we can reduce or eliminate any fatalities. They don't want to just come in and shoot some holes in doors, uh, windows. They want to come in and, uh, create as much carnage as possible. Uh, they're going to make the attempts, I just want to take out the carnage part. And I, I think, I think we can, uh, easily do this.
Keep asking the questions, I guess.
Yeah, yeah, and, um, like I said, I'm two miles away. If you guys personally have any questions, um, John, um, you know, my wife, she knows how to get ahold of me, and, uh, so just, um, and, and any parents or family, um, it's an open door, um, uh, um, you know, so feel free, please. Okay?
Let's set up a time to chat, and we'll, we're coming.
Okay, absolutely, absolutely, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to action items, um, we're moving on to eight-point-one, approve the twenty-twenty-five through twenty-twenty-seven salary and wage agreements with the Atwell staff.
Some of
Motion by Dave.
Second.
Second by Carrie. Like to thank everybody for the time that they put in on getting these all put together, and, uh, we'll move on. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Those opposed? Motion carries. At this time, we're moving on to the open forum. Um, I have a couple of statements I need to read, and, uh, then we'll get to the yellow cards. Um, "The Pine River Baccus School Board recognizes the value of public participation in deliberations and dis- and decisions affecting our schools. At the same time, we recognize the importance of conducting an orderly and efficient proceedings. Please complete all information on the yellow card. In the reverse side of the card, there's, there's some information that you should know, um, what you can and can't say as we go through this. Give the card to either Cindy or Jolene up here in the front, um, as we start this process. I will recognize the speaker, um, who it is, and, um, then I'll have you come forward." While comments and questions are welcome during the open forum, the law, Minnesota State Law thirteen-point-four-three prohibits board from discussing concerns about individual employees, students, in a public meeting forum. If such a matter arises, the proceedings will be stopped immediately, and the speaker will be directed to forward comments regarding the individual employees or students to the superintendent. Because we model civil discourse for all our community, all speakers must present their testimony in a respectful manner. Vulgarity, character, tax, malice, specific complaints identifying staff, students, by name, or in implication of staff or students by name will not be permitted. The board will not deliberate, discuss, or engage in conversation with any speakers tonight during the open forum. However, the board may request that the administration review any concerns that is brought forth from the board presented to the superintendent. Each person addressing the board will have a maximum of three minutes to speak. When you are addressing the board, please identify yourself and your connection to the Pine River Baccus School Board. We have allowed about thirty minutes tonight for an open forum. We thank you for following these procedures and for contributing to be respectful and constructive meeting environment. The Pine River Baccus School District is committed to the highest standards of professional conduct by all staff and to the safe and respectful learning environment for students and staff alike. The district received a complaint involving a staff member, and in accordance with district policy, the district, with the district policy and the Minnesota law, we've conducted an investigation. That investigation has been completed, and the matter is being resolved. The safety and the well-being of our students and staff and their learning and working environment at school are the district's highest priority. Consequently, district policies and procedures that address complaints are followed diligently to, diligently to ensure due process and fair resolution, and to protect the privacy and rights of both students and staff. It is important to understand, Minnesota privacy laws greatly limit what the district can legally disclose, and under these circumstances, the district is prohibited from providing any more information about the complaint other than it has been investigated, addressed, and resolved." These are in no particular order as they came in, so if you had it in first, I apologize, I, I just have them here, and I flipped through the cards, so, um, um, I'm going to call for Verdel Sukup, um, to come forward first. Right on cue, Verdel.
I'm Verdel Sukup. I had kids come to school, Baccus, and then in nineteen ninety, they came here. Going by what you just said, I'll just, uh, it's what I heard. Okay? What went on? And I just feel teachers, doctors, religious, they're all in a position of authority. A teacher's in a classroom, and the kids cannot leave, they're, they're, uh, it's a, it's a responsibility. Going with that, there are standards of decency that they should follow. It's not a law, I don't think, but there's, it should be followed. And if you look at news organizations, colleges, whatever, in the last few weeks, they have discharged people because they felt that standard of decency was, the line was crossed. Uh, I think also, whoever is teacher, whoever, if they're hired for this position to teach this subject, that's what they're called to do. Nothing personal, you know, on their political, religious, it doesn't matter, that's their own personal views. Uh, and like I said, because they're in a position of authority, I, they, they cross the line in my mind when they bring anything like that forward in a classroom. Religious person in a church, you know, they're all the same. And I don't think our students should be subjected to, or subject to, uh, uh, here again, it's what I've heard, I know you guys can't discuss it, I don't, if it's true, then that's, that would be my position on it. I've talked to some people, uh, legal, I don't think there's a real law, you know, to follow. That's why I put down standard of decency. And I think we all, we're adults, we all would follow that in anything we do, you know? But especially, I think, you have an authoritative, what do you call it, position, then your responsibilities may be a little bit stronger than me doing apartment work sometimes. You know, it's, it's, because you've got control of these kids, like a pastor would have control, not control, but congregation's sitting there, you could say, you know, it's just the way it is. Anyway, uh, and of course, I had Don Wood action with, uh, or Jake, but again, good change.
Thank you, Verdel.
Thank you.
Thank you, Verdel. Angie?
I'm going to have to edit my letter as I go, too. Good evening, my name is Angie Form, and I am the parent of a current student and three graduates of PRB. I am speaking here because of the comments that were made in the class of my daughter after the assassination of Charlie Kirk. These comments that were made on September twelfth were unnecessary and uncalled for. Our country is in such a division right now, and we do not need teachers or anyone else pushing it further. My child is truly upset by what was said. She texted me from school about this, and when she came home, she was in tears. Charlie Kirk was more than a political activist to my child and our family, he was a religious figure and influencer to my child, my family, and many others. I didn't necessarily feel that this person needed to lose their job, but in the time since this has happened, I was told that they were, they thought it was okay because it was a college-level class. College-level maybe, but it was taught in high school to sixteen-year-old kids. Since the incident, we have been frustrated and disappointed in the school's response. The situation was not taken seriously by school officials that seemed more intent on placating parents and sweeping this under the rug. A stern talking to was what I was told that he received, not an official reprimand or unpaid suspension. I accompanied my child to the principal's office on Monday, the fifteenth, where he took her statement. I requested a copy of that statement, and was shocked by what it said. It was missing half of what was said in that office. I've also seen a copy of another student's statement, and it was a garbled mess. Anyone not at that meeting would not know heads or tails of what it meant. Parents and children are supposed to be able to trust any staff at PRB schools, to be fair and unalloyed. Trust is definitely lost. My husband and I believe that violence is only an appropriate response to violence. We believe that violence response to someone making statements is wrong, even statements that you may find morally objectionable. This teacher's comments of not caring that Char- Charlie Kirk was assassinated and that his African-American friends can, were happy, can easily be taken as condoning his death. Response by the school leaders was disheartening. I believe that in the name of the assassinated, if the, if the name of the assassinated was changed to another religious or great man like Martin Luther King, the response from the school would have been much more severe, and tells me of a double standard that our school is allowed to stay. And thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we get that mic, uh, we can't hear anything.
That, that mic is, it is on, but it's actually going into, for the, the recording.
For the streaming.
For the, for the live streaming there, so it, it's, it's not hooked up to a speaker in, in, in the room, sorry.
Zach?
Zach Broome.
Oh, okay. He's coming.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Zach Broome. I serve as a pastor and parent in this community. I'm also a graduate of the Pine River Baccus High School. I'm here tonight because of the serious incident that we're aware of, that has shaken the confidence of many family members in our school and community. In September, multiple students reported that a teacher at the school made deeply inappropriate comments in class that were celebratory of the assassination and martyr of Charlie Kirk. For a teacher to make a statement celebrating someone's death over political and religious differences violates every moral, ethical, and professional standard required of anyone entrusted with the care of students. As a parent and community member, I reached out directly to Superintendent John Clark to discuss the matter, but was given no meaningful information or clarity about what happened. After that conversation led nowhere, I filed a formal Data Practices Act requesting to learn how the situation was handled. The district's response confirmed three facts. First, a complaint about Mr. Anderson does exist.
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
Oh, sorry. About the teacher does exist, I apologize for that. I wrote, I put this together before the rules were given, so, my bad. So first, a complaint about this alleged teacher does exist. Second, the investigation into that complaint is now closed, and third, it was closed without any public disciplinary action. This means there was an investigation, there were findings, and yet the district chose to close it with no public discipline. The district's own wording makes it clear that whatever consequences may have occurred were handled privately and did not result in suspension, demotion, or termination. If any private discipline was issued behind closed doors, that is not accountability, that's avoidance. A teacher celebrating the violent death of another human being has no room whatsoever in our classrooms. This is completely unacceptable to the families of this district. I recognize that there are privacy laws that do limit what can be shared, but parents still need to know that serious misconduct will be dealt with seriously, and it hasn't. If a teacher had said, "I'm glad a gay or transgender student was shot and killed," would this have been handled quietly in the same way? We all know the answer to that question, no. And if something like that did occur, I would be here calling for that teacher's termination all the same. This is not an isolated concern. Several students have shared that this same teacher has a pattern of ridicule and
Careful, careful, we can only talk about the head, what's going on right now.
Okay.
Sorry.
Some students were afraid to speak up or file another complaint out of fear of being targeted, embarrassed, or graded unfairly. A few even asked their parents not to say anything because they believed it would not make a difference. That is not a safe classroom. That is intimidation and bullying practices, and it has no place in education. This issue tonight is not about politics, it's about consistency, integrity, and the moral example that we set for students. It's about deciding what kind of community do we want to be? What kind of community do we want to become? We'll be one that supports open dialogue and the free exchange of ideas, or one that tolerates hatred and celebrates death of those we disagree with. Our kids are watching us. They are watching how we handle hate and violence. They're watching to see whether truth and fairness mean something here. As a Christian and minister of the gospel, I'm here because these things matter, I care about my community. I'm not here because I want to see this teacher's life destroyed, I don't. I want to see it redeemed from sin and hatred. The gospel teaches that sin has serious consequences, but it also offers forgiveness while still never ignoring justice. Christ did not rejoice in death, he overcame it on the cross so we can be forgiven and changed. I firmly believe that. And this change begins with repentance, not avoidance, not They're watching to see whether truth and fairness mean something here. As a Christian and minister of the gospel, I'm here because these things matter, I care about my community. I'm not here because I want to see this teacher's life destroyed, I don't. I want to see it redeemed from sin and hatred. The gospel teaches that sin has serious consequences, but it also offers forgiveness while still never ignoring justice. Christ did not rejoice in death, he overcame it on the cross so we can be forgiven and changed. I firmly believe that. And this change begins with repentance, not avoidance, not silence. That's why we must not tolerate this kind of behavior and must demand better from those who shake our kids' hearts and minds. Finally then, this di- this district has already reviewed this case, but now it's your job to fix it. The community expects accountability, not excuses. We expect action that appropriately matches the seriousness of the situation and that has not occurred. We cannot build strong students in a culture of double standards. We cannot teach respect while quietly excusing hatred and open contempt for human life. We cannot expect parents to trust a system that hides behind a process instead of staying on principle. You have the authority, you have the responsibility to make this right, not with words, with transparency and accountability. Since 2020, our schools have lost many students who have not returned to the public classroom. If you're wondering why, you shouldn't be. Instances like this are why. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Zach. Tate B.
I would like to speak as a student, not specifically from said class, but who has had said faculty member. I personally do not believe he would say, or they would say, anything that would put their job on the line. It was a collegiate-level class that things were said in. And I believe that these topics should be able to be stated in a collegiate-level way. That's all.
Thank you. Leland. What? Leland. Leland Tima.
I would like to start by saying that I was a member of, a student in the class of which, uh, the event that is being spoken of has occurred. And I would like to mention that I never thought the teacher in question had said anything of the sort that would support violence, specifically political violence or any violence of the sort. I personally wrote a petition and went to, uh, all nineteen other members of that class and told them very bluntly that they will not be judged for whether or not they were to choose to sign or not to sign the petition, and that it would not be a, uh, problem for them. And I encouraged them all to sign it based on their own personal beliefs of whether or not they thought that the teacher in question had said or promoted anything like political violence. Eighty percent of the students in that class signed that petition, while twenty percent did not. I feel that if you were to choose to take action against the faculty member for this, it would promote minority rule over minority rights and show that all it takes is twenty percent of a classroom to have large disciplinary action taken against the teacher. That is all I have to say.
Thank you. Can you help me with that? Breilin. Breilin.
Good evening. I am, once again, another student. I was not in the class present, but I am good friends of people who were in the classroom. We understand that the topic at hand is very politically sensitive. However, we believe that addressing real-world political violence and its implications are not only appropriate in the class which they were discussing, is essential. Discussing current events, even controversial ones, is part of the curriculum and it serves to prepare students to be informed and thoughtful participants in democratic society. I believe this district supports the inclusion of political and cultural topics when they are intrinsic learning experience and presented in an objective manner from all available accounts. This teacher raised the topic in a way that was educational, not partisan, and such connected to broader questions of political extremism, civil discourse, and democratic responsibility. These are critical themes in civics education, and refusing to address incidents like these would not make the classroom neutral, it would make it disconnected from the real world. The district encourages the development of responsible, productive citizens, and that necessarily includes understanding the impact of political violence and speech in a democracy. While some students may have disagreed with how the conversation made them feel, disagreement is not the same as harassment or indoctrination. I believe it's clear that predatory conduct must include actual harassment or violence based on protected class status. Expressing concern about a public figure or analyzing a political event is not harassment, it's classroom discourse. Once again, the petition that was signed, eighty percent of the students had said that what was said was not said, that the twenty percent had said that this teacher, what he had said, that makes sense. If we want students to become engaged citizens, they must be able to grapple with difficult topics in a structured and respectful environment. And that's exactly what this teacher provides in the classroom. I respectfully ask that the school board recognizes that this discussion was not meant to, um, incite violence, political violence of any kind, or try to indoctrinate students, um, and that it was a curriculum-relevant and policy-aligned event. I want them to protect the academic freedom of educators who responsibly address complex issues and apply district discipline policies fairly and in proportion to actual evidence, not political pressure. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Thank you. Does anybody else have a comment card that they would like to bring forward at this time?
I don't have a card.
Yeah, I just saw the yellow card in the back.
I don't have a card, but I have, I have a, um, letter that a parent emailed me and asked to give to the board members, can I?
If you'd like to give it to me, I'll make copies for you.
I actually made copies.
Jared. Good evening. Jared Johnson, grew up in Pine River, went to Pine River School, graduate of Pine River. Very proud to be a member of this community. And I just look at what's going on here in our overall district and wanting to make sure we, we focus on making sure we're making the right decisions in our district when action needs to be taken, right, wrong, or indifferent. But when there's action we need to be taking on a certain, um, topic that there's more than just, hey, we had a meeting, we discussed it, it's done with. When you see a, a group of people in audience, I'm, I go to a lot of board meetings, whether it's city council meetings, uh, things like that. When you have an audience of people that aren't usually there, there's something going on. So I just, um, would ask that you guys would, um, really think about how you want this district to be known as and this, this school. I think there's a lot of good things happening in Pine River. There's a lot of growth here and there's a lot of people growing in our community. So really, really look at that as, as people move to this community and surrounding communities, they look at school districts. And as a contractor and as a developer, that's one thing you want to be looking at to make sure that your school district is, um, up to standards. So that would be my, my recommendation to you guys.
Thank you, Jared. Sure. Anybody else? Bonnie.
Hi, my name is Bonnie Scrivner, and I was fortunate to be able to attend and graduate from the Pine River High School, to be part of that, this was, became a part of that. And I'm here tonight as a concerned, proud alumna and member of this community, one who believes deeply in the values of equity, safety, and accountability in our schools. I would like to address a deeply troubling incident involving a teacher in this district. Following the recent assassination of Charlie Kirk, a political commentator and Christian, it has been reported that a teacher allegedly made a statement that was appalling, racist, and unacceptable, in my opinion. It trivialized violence, enforced harmful stereotypes, and fostered a classroom environment that is anything but safe or respectful for all students. Our students deserve better. I've chosen, obviously it was a good thing I did, to not name the teacher nor repeat the statement in this form, but with that said, I know that the principal and superintendent is aware of the incident. Students look up to their teachers, and I say that because I remember several years ago looking up to my teachers. And I don't ever recall whether it was, um, in a history class or whatever that the teachers voiced their personal opinions on issues, and especially an issue such as this. I believe a stu- a teacher's job is to lay out the facts and, and give students the tools to make decisions, not to, uh, kind of engage with them about what their opinions are. When a teacher makes a statement like this, it raises serious concerns. And the concern is, what else is being said in the classroom? What kinds of messages are students being exposed to when the door is closed? What's especially alarming is that according to the conversations in the community and the school district, this is not the first time concerns have been raised about this teacher. While I understand this information is based on word of mouth and not official documentation, the fact that multiple people are aware of other inappropriate comments and yet no discipline action seems to have occurred, um, points to a larger systemic issue. If there is no record of previous concerns, we need to ask ourselves, why not? This raises serious questions about how complaints are being handled and whether staff are being held to the standards we expect in this district. Freedom of speech does not mean freedom from accountability, especially when those words spoken in the classroom may incite bias or cause harm. Educators are entrusted with our children's development. They are expected to foster respectful, inclusive environments, not use their positions to express toxic inflammatory rhetoric, particularly during such a tense and sensitive time in our society, and I think we all know that. If this teacher's immediate supervisors have failed to take appropriate action, then the responsibility falls to you, the school board. As elected representatives, you are accountable to this community and obligated to ensure that incidents like this are taken seriously and handled in the best interest of all students. There is no room for hate, racism, or harmful commentary in our schools. I urge you to investigate this matter thoroughly, ensure appropriate consequences are imposed if allegations are verified, and put systems in place that prioritize student safety and integrity in the classroom. Let us not forget that the real victim here in this situation is Charlie Kirk himself, an individual who suffered a violent act and is now being mocked in its aftermath. He is not here to defend himself and making light of what happened to him, especially in front of the students, is both disrespectful and morally indefensible. I appreciate your time, and what I will add is, it was appropriate that the window thing came up and security in the school because comments like this, and said the way supposedly it was, can incite students for a variety of reasons. Maybe it's being bullied in school, but I think it's very important that we look into this matter. Thanks for your time, and I do appreciate what you guys do, and I, and what you do at the school, board, and in the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jamie Preble, I've lived in the community for a little over twelve years now. I just wanted to add on to what one of the students had. I want to speak to how he thought that was an appropriate exchange in a college-level class. And if it was done in, in a professional manner, I totally agree. Because the number-one thing Charlie Kirk was talking about was having conversations with people we disagree with, right? But being a leader in that classroom, he had a really good opportunity to lead a conversation and let the students speak openly about it, but he failed when he got his opinion involved in the conversation. And unfortunately, from what I've heard, the opinion was that, well, he kind of deserved to be shot.
Da-da-da-da-da.
Oh, sorry, okay. But if we have things like that being said inside this building, what is the point of having bulletproof glass on the outside? That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Can't keep my mouth shut, Chris. I'm Butch Oberfell, and I cannot sit here and be quiet as a believer in Jesus Christ and condone what I heard was said. I believe that the parents that have, give you the letter that, that Angie came up and read, I don't doubt what their kids believe this is what was said. I believe that speech like that condones murder. I believe if you have a child in this class or in this school that's being bullied, and now he thinks this teacher is condoning murder, well, I can go and get a gun and shoot whoever I want to. Maybe I'm going way off in a different direction, but how come these shootings keep happening with these kids? Our leaders, you teachers, the board, represents all of us people. I used to go to this school, I actually graduated, that's amazing, but, and, and, uh... I got grandkids, kids that went to the school, but I can't condone what's going on now. It's on you guys' shoulders, and you need to step up and do the right thing. I don't know what that is. In my mind, I do know what that is, but I'm not gonna say it, so, um... But as a Christian, I had, I could never lay my head on the pillow tonight and know that I went home and kept my mouth shut. So, that's all I got to say, and I thank you guys. And we do have some awesome teachers here, I believe that. But one bad apple can spoil the whole dastum thing, so we gotta take note of that. And we need to be a little more informed. I understand, I don't understand all the rules and regulations. I'm just an old guy that took care of things myself. I don't like all this stuff that goes on because you can't say nothing, because your attorney says you can't, and blah, blah, blah. I used to go right to the source, I had no problem with that, and I still don't. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you, Butch. Any other cards? No other business before the board?
No other business before the board, meeting's adjourned.
Done?
Yeah, take it, take it, Roger.